Recorded, correct Juan?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. Well, then we will go ahead and get started. Good morning. My name is Stephanie Marshall. I am the City of Bend hearings officer assigned to this file. Today is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. It's 9:05 a.m. And the matter before me is an application assigned project number PZ-20-0321. And the applicant is Equity Home Builders. I'm going to go through a few preliminary comments and kind of an outline for how the hearing will proceed today. This is a quasi judicial hearing. And so all testimony and evidence should be directed toward the standards for approval, which are set forth in the staff report. That is available on ePlans at the City of Bend and I believe has been circulated to the applicant and the applicant's representatives. Just as some initial comments, I have no interest in the outcome of this application. I do wish to disclose on the record that I was the hearings officer on a related application and appeal. That application number is PZ-19-0841, decided earlier this year in 2020. But again, I have no interest in the outcome of this application. I believe that there are no existing conflicts of interest I'm not related to or have any interest in the applicant or the applicant's representatives. And I believe that I can make a full and fair decision on the merits of the application. So at this point, I would ask if anybody has any objections to my hearing the matter before me today. Okay, hearing none. Again, quasi judicial hearing, that means that any evidence you wish me to consider should be raised while the record is open. We can discuss at the end of the hearing today whether the record will be left open for any period of time following this public hearing. And if you don't raise anything you wish me to consider, it will be considered waived and cannot be brought up in a future appeal. So please make sure that you bring everything that you wish me to consider to my attention. And this is a virtual public hearing, as you are participating in this. It's being conducted via WebEx. City has a staff person helping here today, Juan, who's made some introductory comments and directions this morning on participation. So we're all, you know, doing our best with the COVID-19 pandemic and obviously not able to meet in person as we normally would at the city council chambers. Pardon me. So typically, a hearing like this will proceed with staff presentation and then the applicant and the applicant's representatives. And then we'll turn it over for any public testimony, questions, comments. And then the staff will have, excuse me, the, well, yes, both the staff and the applicant will have time to circle back to any questions or rebuttal evidence or testimony that they wish to give before the hearing is closed. So again, let's, let's all be patient and consider it as we log in and stream in, if you will, to this virtual public hearing. And at this point, I will go ahead and turn it over to Karen Swenson.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll be sharing my screen. So as you mentioned, we are here to discuss PZ-20-0321, which is the Pettigrew 19-unit multifamily unit development proposal. And the, this subject property is zoned RM. The properties to the west are zoned RL, west of Pettigrew Road. This property abuts Pettigrew Road only. The surrounding properties to the south and east and northeast are zoned RM and are also owned by the applicant. And the property directly to the east, as you mentioned, was approved with, under PZ-190841 and was appealed with additional conditions or modified conditions of approval by the same hearings officer. And then the remaining area is zoned RS, all the way out to 27th beyond, with a small bit of commercial south of Reed Market Road. This Pettigrew corridor that the subject property abuts is a major collector street. It extends over four miles from Reed Market Road to Bear Creek Road, changes names to Pecil Boulevard and extends to the northern city limits, except for one minor missing length north of Highway 20 that's on the city's CIP and is planned for the short term. This corridor is a key north-south corridor identified in the city's TSP. So to zoom in a little bit more on the subject property, it's currently developed with a single-family home and accessory buildings. It does share a driveway with the property to the south, which I'll mention here in a bit. And the closest intersection is Woodhaven Road that abuts Pettigrew Road on the west side, just southwest of the property. This is the proposal that shows 19 units. It has 19, or it has nine attached units, as you can see, and one single detached unit in the northeast corner. This is identical to the property to the east with a private street bisecting the property. It's 1.15 acres, as I mentioned, zoning RM. And I touched on all of those items here. So to go through the conditions of approval, the key one noted in the applicant's letter submitted late yesterday was options for providing sewer to the site, that these were also outlined in the city's utility availability analysis that was submitted as part of the application. This is, the three options are to extend the gravity main from the intersection of Reed Market Road up Pettigrew Road at a minimum grade. And if it doesn't meet the minimum pipe cover, that a pressure sewer should be constructed to service the site. And then you skip down to the third one, the same option, but extending from the north from Claraway Avenue, south on Pettigrew Road. Or the middle option, removing the common property line between 61647 Daly Estates Drive, which was the subject property under PZ-190841, and this subject property, extending the private sewer line. As we've noted before, and a standard is that private utilities will not be permitted to cross property lines. And just to go through, you know, I'm not going through all 37 conditions of approval, but just to highlight some major ones, that 10-foot right-of-way dedication is required on Pettigrew Road. As I mentioned, this is a major collector and to widen it to the standard collector right-of-way width, which will include a 36-foot pavement width to match the surrounding pavement widths in the area, including six-foot bike lane, planters strip, and six-foot property tight sidewalk along the property frontage. As I mentioned, will require a reconstruction of the existing shared driveway to the south so that property abutting to the south will have its own driveway upon completion of this project. The driveway apron serving the private street must be reduced to 30 feet. And if the eastern property is not developed first, then there must be some temporary access turnaround at the eastern terminus. And then all onsite stormwater must be retained onsite, and this must be outside of the public access and public utility easements. And this is one that's a key concern of ours in terms of when either a SIMP or a infrastructure permit is submitted, that we can assure that this project is buildable in terms of retaining the stormwater onsite. And also the pedestrian walkways that are extended north-south to each individual unit are, they're currently shown on the site plan as four feet in width, and that needs to be the standard five feet. The final site plan is required under Bend Development Code 4.2.500. It must incorporate all the conditions of approval prior to any building or engineering permits. And the Tier 3 right-of-way or infrastructure permit must incorporate all those conditions of approval. And I just wanted to show the proposal one time again at the end, in case you want to keep this up here on the screen for others to reference. That is it for the staff presentation. As I mentioned, the applicant submitted a letter last night, late yesterday, and we have not been able to digest that in full. Chris Henningson here from the Engineering Division, a principal engineer, may have some comments after the applicant speaks. And in terms of public participation, as you noted, I don't think we have anybody on the line today, but if we do, in addition to that, I had two people call via phone. One just asked if it was apartment buildings, you know, the standard apartment buildings. And I explained what the proposal was. The other person was the property owner to the north concerned about privacy and just asked further questions about his development potential being RS as opposed to this proposal being RM. And that was it.
Thank you, Karen. So if I understand your comments, Chris Henning, I can never say his name, sorry. Testimony and comments after the applicant presents their comments, correct?
I will respond to whatever is necessary. I have not had the ability to see what the applicant provided as of yesterday. So I'm here to just act as a, as support if anything is needed.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I think, given that some of, some of what was stated in the letter yesterday afternoon will be addressed by the applicant, let's turn to the applicant at this point. And Mr. Klein, are you going to proceed first, or is Chris or Tim going to go first?
Marshall, it's Chris Kovek. I think the order will go on is I'll also go first and address more of the legal and technical arguments. And then to the extent I need input from Tim, I'll ask him, but I think we're pretty much good on that. And then Mr. Klein will probably speak after I'm done.
That sounds great. Okay, thank you, Chris. I guess go on ahead now.
All right. Well, thank you for your time again this morning. And as you mentioned, this is kind of a deja vu in some ways because it's a similar, substantially similar application to the one that considered several months ago, my first Zoom hearing. But it's a, it's a 19-unit condo development, 10 buildings. And as we've said before and want to reiterate, it's, it's a, it's a needed project in Bend. It's got housing that is adequately sized, but still affordable at under $300,000 a unit, assuming we can, we can proceed as we'd like. And we submitted something this morning, I think is real interesting. We found, we got this last night, Larry put this together, that in Bend right now, there are 18 properties listed for sale under $400,000. Only 19 units. And so I think that emphasizes the fact that what we're trying to deliver here is, is housing that's, that's nice and people can be proud of, but also that they can afford to live in. And there will be some other issues I talked about on the specifics that reinforce what we're trying to do and why the proposal, we feel should be approved as, as we present it. One other thing I'd like to say is, is I think if you've gone through the staff report, you've seen that the issues have somewhat narrowed from last time. There were some other issues about the pedestrian walkways. We agree with, with most of staff's recommendations and conditions. The driveway has to be addressed. The landscaping, that the issues that the city raised, we agree they have to be addressed. I think the applicant did a lot to kind of shore up what we had to deal with last time. We've reacted to your decision by revising our plans for the walkways so that they're direct. And then staff has responded favorably by acknowledging that this public access easement over the private street that you found will meet the standards or can meet the standards, that's going to satisfy block lengths to the extent that was an issue. So I think both parties have done a good job reacting to your decision in the last one to kind of address some of the issues to take them out of play for today. The big issue, you know, what you'd call, I guess, the elephant room is really the sewer. And I'm going to talk about the sewer first. So there's no, there's no dispute that, you know, sewer is not, public sewer right now is not available to the proper. And staff has outlined a couple of options. These came up last time. One coming from the south, one coming from the north. And both of them, I think staff has admitted, their words were prohibitively expensive. And we've given you numbers in our, in our exhibits that the south is over $240,000 and the north is over $400 and some thousand dollars just to get a public main to this property. And, well, the difference is, it's 242 from the south. That's the difference between building what the city is saying our options are and doing what we want to do, which is go out the other direction to Daly Estates. This, what we understand from the staff report is there's really only one problem. And that is that the city has said, and you saw it on the slide, that they don't allow private utilities to cross property lines. Well, there's two responses to that. The first one is what we really proposed is to put a public line through the property to Daly Estates. It would run through both developments and it would be within a public access, public utility easement. And I don't think staff responded to that in the staff report, and maybe we'll hear about it later, but, but if it's a public line, we don't believe the staff, that staff has identified any prohibition to putting that public line in, in the location that we proposed to put it in. And if you think about it, and we put this in our letter in some detail, if, if the, if we were proposing a public line in a dedicated right-of-way, I understand staff to say, that's fine. And that would be consistent with what you see all over most cities, including Bend, is public utilities go under public rights of way. Now, if you, if you know about dedication, dedication does not eliminate property lines. Property lines remain technically where they are subject to the rights of the public, which are very, very broad. And the, and the property lines essentially don't exist, but they do exist legally and for a couple of important reasons. If a, if a dedication, if a right-of-way is vacated, you need to reestablish that property line because half of the property goes to one side and half goes to the other. So the line actually is there. Now, if you, if you translate that to what we're doing, we're proposing to create a public access and utility easement over this private street. The street we know will now meet all of city standards. We believe that public access utility easement effectively eliminates the property line just like a dedication. Because if you, if you can say, as staff has said, that this public access utility easement satisfies block length, it can be used for that purpose, just like a public street. It's not provided any reasoning to you for concluding that it can't function exactly the same way for a public utility. So, so that's the answer. We propose a public line. But even if it were private, I would ask that you, you've pushed staff a little bit on this in the city, what legal authority does the, does the city have to say that a property owner cannot grant an easement over their property for a neighbor's private utility? I would, I would suggest that that is a very common scenario. And I don't think the city has the legal authority to tell me that I cannot grant my neighbor an easement for their private utility. That has nothing to do with the city. The city can't tell property owners what, how they alienate interests in their property. That, I think that position raises serious constitutional issues. If the city is going to tell me I cannot grant an easement to my neighbor for a purely private utility. So on both reasons, I think staff hasn't given you any legal, legal analysis to say what we're proposing to do does not meet some objective standard. That gets to the second point, which we didn't have to deal with in the last one, and that is, we believe the city's position on sanitary sewer violates ORS 197307. And we didn't have to get it to it last time because you found that the needed housing argument related to this development and the application we were arguing about related to a different development. Now it is ripe for consideration. And we've given you the numbers on what it's going to cost the difference to do the sewer the way we would like to do it, and which we believe is not prohibited by any code provision, and what we would have to do for, for, to satisfy the two options the city proposes. Now, if you look at it from the first point, the statute says that the city can only apply clear and objective standards. I can't find in the city code a clear and objective standard that says you cannot put this sewer line, whether public or private, within an easement that crosses a property line. So it has to be some subjective policy that the city has that it doesn't want this to happen. We believe it happens in other instances. And we've given you an example in another case recently where Tim was involved, and the city kind of acknowledged that if you're going to subdivide this property and have a sewer, it's going to have to be within a public easement. And, and in that case, it will have to cross a property line. So we believe that the evidence in the record anyway is that this is purely a subjective standard that comes up from policy perhaps, and there is no clear and objective standard that prohibits what we want to do. But probably the bigger point under the statute is that the application of this policy or standard or whatever it is really does discourage affordable housing. And the numbers speak for themselves. If we were to come in from the north, this would add $22,000 per unit to the cost. And that's just the initial construction. As we pointed out, you know, this is, you know, people that are going to buy these homes, they're not going to be able to afford monthly assessments of any magnitude. That's one of the things we're trying to avoid. So if you have this pump system, that's why they're more expensive. We're going to have to extend lines, but also have pump systems because gravity won't work. There's going to have to be assessments for the long-term maintenance, repair, replacement of these pumps. That's going to add to the overall cost of these units significantly. And so when you combine the, the beginning cost with the, the construction cost with the ongoing operation and maintenance costs, doing the sewer the way the city wants is going to be prohibitively expensive. It's going to discourage housing and it is going to violate the statute, we believe. And I do want to talk about the third option the city raises is we'll just remove the property line. What's missing there is the detail. So we have an approved development next door. If we remove the property line, what happens? If it's just as simple as removing the property line and both developments proceed as they are presented, well, that might be an option, but we're, we're a little concerned that there was no detail behind that. And, and then the other point about that is, it's really what we're proposing to do with the public access easement. So what we're proposing to do is essentially eliminate that property line through use of a public easement, which can be done efficiently, effectively, and simply, and it doesn't require perhaps revisiting another approval that's already final. It doesn't impact the timing of this development. It's, it's creating an easement that the city attorney can approve or comment on and recording it. And then the line for, for effective purposes, for the sewer and for access, the line's gone, where, at least where the road is. So we think it's, it's void of details, but also it seems to be an unnecessary step to accomplish what we've already proposed to accomplish. So, so that's our position on sewer. We think condition three just needs to be eliminated and, and the, maybe replaced with a, a clarification that the sewer must be within this public access utility easement. I think we proposed it, but to the extent that could be clarified, we're, we're fine with that. The second major issue we have is the dedication. And that issue, we, we hope and encourage you to follow a recent decision on Century Drive that Greg Frank as a hearings officer decided. Because the issue there was essentially the same. Century Drive, as you know, is, is an arterial. So the code, city code standards say for an arterial, we require 100 feet of right-of-way. Well, in Century Drive in front of our development did not have 100 feet. It's about 10 feet short. And so the city tried to impose the exact same condition. We want to take 10 feet. They weren't going to do any improvements. There was no need to widen the street. And like here, the city found the street had capacity. So we challenged that. And hearings officer Frank went through the, the case law, Nolan and Dolan, and really focused more on the, the Brown case from, against City of Medford here in Oregon and the Dan Hill case versus City of Portland. And the Dan Hill case had a very similar issue. And the, the key finding that the hearings officer Frank made was that, you know, the city has to identify a legitimate governmental interest. And it may be street standards. But critically, he found that just the fact that the development doesn't meet that standard is not a basis to exact property. It's not the nexus the city can rely upon. They have to show there's some specific impact that will impede the interest. And in this case, in Century Drive, and in this case, it would be capacity. If the city needs to, if the city wants to exact property to widen the street and it can show that the development is increasing demands to the extent that there is a capacity issue, that's what the, the case in Dan Hill, the court found, and that's what hearings officer Frank went to. And he found that there just was no evidence that the city could present that impacts from the Century Drive development required, created any kind of capacity issue that would be a basis for denial and therefore trigger the right to exact. Here we have the same thing. The city has said at page 49 of the, of the report and recommendations, all of our utilities, all of our facilities, including transportation facilities, have capacity. So the street is wide enough. The only, and it, and it has identified zero impacts from this development that would create some kind, that would impede the city's interest in capacity and having a street wider than it already is. So they haven't demonstrated any impacts to, to create that link that hearings officer Frank found they needed to create. The second point about this is, when you read the staff report carefully, they're not actually going to use the 10 feet. So the 10 feet would be needed to create 80 feet of right-of-way. And 80 feet of right-of-way for a collector is necessary if you build it to full standards, which is 56 feet of traveling pavement, 10 feet of planting strip, five on each side, and 12 feet of sidewalk. Well, here the city is saying, we're not going to require that. We're only going to require 36 feet of pavement. So if you, if you do the math, at least the math I did, and people can double check that, but if you put in all the improvements the city is trying to get, you can do that within 60 feet. 36 feet of pavement, 10 feet of planting strip, and 12 feet of sidewalk. So on our side, if you need 36 feet of pavement, that would be 18 feet on our side, and you need another 11 feet for the other improvements the city wants, it's 29 feet. And we already have 30. So not only is there no impact analysis that the city presented, it's telling you it's not going to use the right of way. It doesn't need it. So our development can't create this need. So that's, that's our position on, on the dedication. We think hearings officer Frank got the law right. He relied on the correct Court of Appeals decisions. He interpreted them properly. And we encourage you to follow that decision here. The final argument we have is on the street improvements, and it's really substantially the same argument, is the only basis for requiring the developer applicant to do street improvements on Pettigrew is the city says its standards for that street require certain improvements. And we know they're going to deviate from them, but we, we don't need to get into that. So that's the same argument that the city presented on right-of-way. It didn't say your impacts create capacity issues, therefore we need to widen the street, we need right-of-way. They said, our standards say it has to be this wide, we want the property. And we know the hearings officer said, you can't do that. So here, the city is saying, our standards say these improvements should be made for this classification, therefore you have to do it. Under the hearings officer Frank's decision, that's not enough. The city has to come in with evidence that there's some specific impacts from this development on that street that would impede the city's legitimate interest in its street standards. So that would mean if they want resurfacing, they want new pavement for 36 feet, what about this development is going to create a physical impact on that street surface and require it to be rebuilt? and require it to be rebuilt? If they want curves, what about this development is going to create a need, an issue that would impede the city's interests if the curb was not there? Now, we know the street was functioning, the street was developed the way it was years ago. It's been that way for many years. And based on page 49, it functions properly. It has all the capacity for this development. So it's a high bar for the city, I think, to come in and say, even though we have this existing system that functions properly and has capacity, this development has some impacts that, that will be on the street that require us to rebuild it. I don't think there is any evidence of that, but, but there certainly isn't in the record today. And so legally until, until there is evidence of that type of impact, something that would substantially impede the legitimate governmental interest on that street. We don't think the city can exact, uh, public improvements because we know that under the Coons case now, um, exacting these off-site improvements, um, which just cost money, uh, i- is an exaction just like real property. And that's a deviation from the law before, um, 2010, I think, or before 2016, when that case came out, uh, because under West Coast, that West Coast, uh, West Lynn case, uh, I think the law was that cities could require you to make public improvements if it already had the dedication, without going through the, the Nolan Dolan analysis and the Supreme Court, and Coons changed that. So the analysis legally is the same. Uh, and, and therefore we think the hearings officer's decision on Century Drive is, is totally applicable. Uh, the law in, uh, Dan Hill versus City of Portland, the hearings officer relied on, totally applicable to the improvements. And, and we don't believe the city's made its showing under the, the case law to, to exact those improvements. So those are our issues. Like I said, the rest of the conditions we found acceptable and, and, uh, have no problem with them, but it's, uh, the conditions we concluded in our letter. I think it's three, nine, 11, and 15 that we believe should be, um, removed from the, from the, the decision, those recommended decisions. Or recommended conditions, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and I, and I acknowledge, uh, the letter came in yesterday. Uh, I believe it's about a nine or 10-page letter. And, and thank you for that. Um, and I guess at this point, um, we'll continue with the applicant's presentation. Uh, if, if Larry or Tim wishes to present now, uh, we'll, we'll turn it over to one of them.
This is Larry Kine. How are you? You know, following up with Chris, I don't have very much to say. He does such a good job. That's, that's why I, uh, work with him so well. But, you know, the only thing that I would go say is if there, the city may go back and try to manufacture some, some evidence now for, um, some impacts that are created by this for the improvements and the dedication along Pettigrew. But it's just going to be a manufacturing of it. If, if it was really out there, they would have put it in all of the work that they make us do ahead of time. And so, um, you know, which one would be accurate? The, the information they gave us to begin with, when we tried to get information from them to proceed with this application, or the information that they produced now to try to, you know, impede us to, or not impede us, but, require us to do the dedications and the improvements. All that being said, me as a developer understands the, um, need for, um, street improvements. And I, I would totally be open to a development agreement with the city for some type of system development, um, credits toward my project so that they could get those improvements done now. They just don't offer them. They used to, back in the day. You used to have negotiations with the city to go do things just like this, so we wouldn't be in front of you and wasting your time and taxpayers' money. But they just don't incorporate that anymore. But i- if, if the city is open to those types of things, we could have those kinds of discussions and I would be open to doing those improvements, giving that dedication uh, with some type of payment through a S D C credit. So that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Larry. Okay, great. Tim?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
I think I got all the buttons pushed right. I don't, also don't have a heck of a lot to add to, to Chris's, uh, commentary there. I think he hit, hit all the proper points that need to be addressed. Um, a few things I could point out, I suppose, are 4.0 of the City of Ben standards and specs. Um, I, I suppose we can submit those later. I'm not sure how to get them to you. Sure, we can arrange it, but uh, the short version of, uh, 4.0 sanitary sewer systems is the City of Ben requires gravity sewers in caps, per sentence. It does give the options of, of pressure sewers as an alternative and such. And I, I think those are valid options if we didn't have another option presented by the applicant, open to the applicant, um, that provides gravity sewers. And, um, other than Chris's comments on, uh, the easement and the property line, I, I think that's, that's worth a note. Other than that, I think he's covered it well. And if you have any questions, I can answer those, or we can move on.
Thank you. Um, at the end of the, uh, presentations today, I will ask if the record should be left open or if there's a, a request to leave the record open. And I guess telling me that that may be the case. So, uh, you were asking about an opportunity to, uh, 4.0 and the standards and specs. So that may be available to you. But, uh, let's continue right now with, um, testimony in the hearing. And, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll circle back to that at the end.
Thank you much.
You're welcome. Um, is there anyone else, uh, wishing to provide testimony, testimony on behalf of the applicant today?
This is Chris Kobach. That was all from us. Uh, unless there's somebody from the public that called in that wants to give supporting testimony, we would be, uh, we would conclude our presentation, uh, subject to rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to take a look at the attendees. Um, and I guess I'll ask Juan. Oh yes, thank you, Juan. Juan has just put up the virtual meeting guidelines. Um, and I'll, I'll try to do this hand in hand, uh, with him to see if there's anyone present online or via phone that, pardon me, wishes to provide, uh, comment or, um, in support or even in opposition. Look at this, attendees. I am not seeing anyone. Just want to confirm that, uh, that that is the case. Okay, um, all right. Well then, um,
And I'm sorry, uh,
Yes.
We do have a new, uh, phone caller that might not have heard, um, instructions. Or, uh, if, if you are on the phone, please use your keypad, um, and dial star three to raise your hand if you would like to provide public testimony. So that's how we'll be able to know if, if you are here to provide public testimony. If you're here just to listen, that's fine too. We just want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity. So, uh, star three, if you'd like to raise your hand and provide public testimony at this time for the calling user right now, five four one three eight nine. Yeah. We'll just give him a second, but yeah, I'm not seeing anybody either, man, so I'm with you there.
Okay, um, all right, well, again, I'm, it's so difficult to do this remotely. I mean, it's not, but it is. Um, so I guess at this point, um, staff in the city has presented, uh, their, their, uh, case, if you will, and the applicant is their, um, case. Uh, typically in a live hearing, I would ask if anybody, you know, if we'd like to have a, a quick break uh, for both sides to, um, you know, get their notes together, kind of converse. And then we'd go back on the record, if you will, um, to complete, uh, rebuttal testimony. Uh, is there any interest, um, by the attendees present here to take a quick break? I mean, well, this will continue, but we'll just go off the record. Putting that out there.
Uh, the applicant doesn't, uh, require any break.
Okay.
In terms of the staff, um, if the, uh, record is extended, um, we don't need any more at the moment, but we will be responding since we got the letter at the late hour.
Okay. Great. Okay. Well then, why don't we just keep going? Um, and, uh, we'll, it's time for rebuttal. Um, I will start with the city. Um, and then after the city's remarks, the, the applicant, and then we'll discuss, um, the extending the record, the written record.
Thank you, Stephanie. And Chris may, um, have something to say after this or may wait until the, um, written record, to be, to submit written comments. Um, just in terms of the few items that the applicant, um, mentioned, the three options for the, uh, sewer, to provide sewer to the property. Um, as I mentioned, that was in the utility availability analysis. Um, the extension of the sewer, uh, through the property to, and the consolidation of the property lines, that was an option even presented in the previous, um, approval, with, uh, under P Z nineteen oh eight four one, that the applicant chose not to, take an opportunity of that at that, that time. So that is not something new. The, um, the, uh, applicant's claims of increased costs for, uh, extending from Claraway or Reed Market, and then the issues regarding pressure sewer. If the, uh, option of removal of the property line is chosen, those are all, um, moot, and not applicable. The applicant has indicated that this kind of is a little last minute, um, option and they're, they're not understanding, um, the implication. But as I mentioned, that has been a, an option since day one of the previous, um, application. As I mentioned, um, under the previous application, the reason the applicant did not, um, consolidate these properties to begin with is because the threshold for providing public open spaces, 20 units. And therefore the applicant broke these, this property, um, this development into the two lots, 19 units each. And, uh, so the option is still there to remove that property line. Um, assuming that, yes, the previous, um, nineteen oh eight four one was approved. And this would go forward as approved, they could still remove the property line. And if their objective of, of avoiding providing common, public common open space for their, um, future residents. And then in terms of the dedication, um, I personally was not the, um, planner that, um, represented staff for that triplex, um, out on Century Drive. Um, so I'm not familiar with that and I will be going through that, um, in terms of, uh, responding and written comment in the extended record. Um, I do want to state that the, um, applicant has shown the 10-foot right of way dedication for this subject property, for this application. Excuse me. So it's very interesting that they are now basically wanting to modify their application. And, uh, we will need to determine whether that is such, um, because therefore we would not be, we would not have reviewed the, uh, the application um, as, as they have requested, um, because they did show that 10-foot right of way dedication. All, uh, streets improvements along the frontage are required, um, per city code. Um, and, uh, there's, we'll respond to all that in detail in our written response. And as I just mentioned, um, in the beginning of the staff report, um, that we are acknowledging this is a private street, uh, per your direction on the previous approval. And, um, applying, um, all of the, uh, the standards of a private street, um, to this, to this specific subject property. And so that's why this varies from the, our previous, um, recommendation for the abutting property. And so we're in line with, um, your, uh, decision, um, carrying that forward to this subject property. And regarding the S D C credits, um, that is, uh, S D C credits are, um, are permitted on, um, improvements that are required, um, under the, or that are listed on the city's capital improvement program. This, uh, segment of, um, Pettigrew Road is not, um, on the city's C I P. So S D C credits, um, would not be, be applied. Um, and just to reiterate, as I did during my presentation, that, uh, Pettigrew Road is a key north-south corridor. Um, and so it is not, um, some, uh, local street or a collector road that is for a smaller segment. This is a four-mile corridor, um, that is needed not only for today, but 20, 50 years in the future. And so, um, that right of way needs to be, um, in line with what is required per code. And, uh, Chris Henderson can add any comments if he so chooses at this time.
Yeah, I'd like to do that. I'm kind of getting on, uh, the conversation of sewer. You know, I'd, I'd like to point out first and foremost that, you know, that the intent of public sewer is for the use of the general public. As the site plan shows, um, being, if this was to move forward as a public sewer, not to say that the city necessarily, uh, chooses this as, as a great option just because it, it is used by a particular property, um, as opposed to the general public. Uh, the, the situation is, is, is that even as it's shown here, um, on the site plan, it doesn't meet the intent of the city code in the to and through policy. So even if this was a public sewer, the general public through, through future use of the area cannot utilize it. It's being utilized to service one property and only one property, um, as, as shown and, and dictated by, by what, what has been provided under this land use. Additionally, I'd like to point out that the hearings officer, under the previous decision, identified this as a private sewer, not to be extended through. So, uh, we've, we've, we've got that issue kind of staring us in the face as well and, and that it's, it's not in compliance with the previous decision. Going on to kind of the, 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 the street conversation, um, I'd like to point out that there is precedence, um, for, for having the street constructed through this corridor. Under the current standard, the street is actually supposed to be 56 feet wide, um, under, under, uh, table C three point four, uh, point two hundred. I'd like to identify that the city is asking for a, a, a smaller street section because of how the, the corridor has already, uh, been constructed out. Um, we, we didn't see it was necessary to, to, to meet the, the wider street requirements, uh, per the development code. The reason why that 56-foot section, uh, is in place and the reason why we get the dedication um, with major corridors as identified on the T S P is for future planning of the, of those roadways. This street is not always going to be the rural street that it is today. If the city, back in the day, uh, I'll use Reed Market as, as, as an example. If it was on the T S P as an arterial, um, and we had obtained the 100 feet of right of way, we probably would have had a wider street section out there and we probably wouldn't be having the problems that we have today with capacity issues. So having the right of way dedication and, and the width that's required on the development code is, is for planning and for the construction of the street to support the future traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, um, rebuttal from the applicant.
Uh, thank you, uh, hearings officer Marshall. Um, Chris Kobach, I'll, I'll do the rebuttal and, and, uh, I mean, Larry may chime in if I don't cover everything that we should cover. But, uh, to Karen's comments, I, I, the first thing I want to talk about is I, I want to confirm what I think I heard, which is the city would support removing this property line, uh, without affecting either of the current applications. That's significant because that, and, and we didn't argue and we've never claimed that this is a brand new issue. We, we acknowledge that the city has raised this issue in the last application before, but we've never heard that comment before, which is what we've been kind of pushing for is what are the, what are the impacts of removing that line? Because, you know, if you have to start over on one development, you're creating unnecessary delay. That could potentially violate the statute as well. But more importantly, you're just keeping housing off the market longer than we really need. So what, if what I heard is correct and the line can just be removed without impacting either of these, uh, um, development approvals. development approvals, that might very well be the best option to pursue. Because you know how these play out is, we, we go through the process, and you have to make a decision, and these are some fairly, you know, complicated legal issues. And although they're interesting, you know, you have to make a tough decision, and if you decide for us, then the city doesn't get anything. And if you decide for the city, then we've got these conditions that we think are exactions, and we have to look at 197796 and say, well, we'll probably just do them and sue the city for damages. That exposes the city to a huge potential liability. Or we have to go to Luba and appeal, and that delays things and costs money. So the consequences are, are pretty big, and if we can eliminate a lot of those consequences, sewer, which would be one of the bigger ticket items in a, in a potential future dispute, by just removing the line, I, I, I think Larry would be, would be willing to pursue that, and he can, he can chime in on that. So the dedication, you know, Karen's right, it was on the original site plan, but as we explained in our letter, and I know we didn't get it done until late, we were still trying to digest the big staff report, and I worked on that most of the weekend to get it done in time to get out Monday. But, but there was an intervening circumstance, two things really. First, we received this decision after we submitted the site plan. And while we've been pushing that rock up a hill, that was a decision that we, we obtained that was favorable. And it did, we think, clarify the law that you have to apply or should apply in this, in this case. So we are asking, we submitted a modified site plan that just removes the dedication. Now, is that a major modification? If you look at the staff report, I would think no, it, it, it's, it's one element, it's the city. We showed dedication, and, and the city wanted that dedication to exact that dedication. If that goes away, nothing changes, because as Mr. Henningson said, the city's limited the public improvements it wants. So even if you were to go against us on that, it's not as if they need the dedication for this project. It, it, I don't think taking the 10 feet off the site plan does anything really on the substance of the issues. It's just, there's not 10 feet of dedication there. So on the, Karen also mentioned that the, the SDC credits don't apply because this is not on the city's CIP, I wrote down, I, I don't know, I can't remember what that stood for, but then she said there's no plan to improve Pedigree. It's not on their plan for improvements. Well, I think that just reinforces what we're saying. You know, they're, they're not requiring 56 feet of asphalt, it's not on their plan to improve without impacts from our development. This is, this isn't a high priority. This road will not be improved. It, it's not needed to be improved. So why would the developer be on the hook to do it lacking any impacts from the development? Just because the city has an opportunity to get one segment improved on somebody else's done? That, I don't think that's the way it's supposed to work. If it was really an important project, and that road needed to be reconstructed, and we were adding to that need, it would be on their plan. And that kind of segues into some of Chris Henningson's comments, which is on the dedication, he said something important, it's needed for future planning. That may be, I, I would acknowledge that a city has the legitimate right to plan for the future, and their plans may call for streets being widened, and their plans may anticipate more right-of-way. The disconnect, though, is what hearings officer Frank addressed, and what the case in the court of appeals decided in Hill. And that is, if the city wants to implement that future planning by taking property as an exaction in a development application, it needs to comply with the legal standard, the constitutional standards in Nolan Dolan, as edified by our Court of Appeals in Hill versus City of Portland. It has to show the impact. That's what it can't do in this case. So that leaves the city in an awkward position, I agree. They have choices to get that right-of-way in the future if they need it. They have the right of eminent domain. And that's how it should work. If our development doesn't give the city the legal hook to take the property as an exaction, the city just has to look in the future, how is it going to meet that future demand outside of an exaction? And that's a decision cities make all the time. It doesn't change how the law should be applied to our application. On the sewer, the one thing I wanted to point out is, is, and this is something that also has changed. I disagree that this sewer is only going to supply property to, or to services to one property. I think that's looking at it a little bit narrowly. Development and ownership is changing for a lot of reasons. And we're seeing more of these single-family condo developments because they're more efficient, as we've pointed out. We can provide truly affordable housing without long extended land use processes to create individual lots. So what we're actually doing is providing public sewer to this, this line. If it were extended through the two properties as a public line, it would be a public line that really you'd have to conclude is providing a public benefit to 38 families. That's who's going to benefit from it. You, if you look at it just as one property or two properties, I think you're ignoring how development and ownership is going, not only in the city of Bend, but everywhere. The new state laws on allowing these needed housing on single lots. We are going to see so much more of this development where there's multiple people living on a single lot in these porplexes, cluster cottages, and all of the other different variations of needed housing. And, and if, and if we're going to ignore that we're providing, we need to provide public services to the families that own those because it's on one lot, we're doing a disservice to everyone. So this would be, this would be a needed public facility benefiting a number of families in Bend. And furthermore, if the city really wants to get involved in, in, in protecting these people and providing future benefits, have them join with us in, in developing the, the plan for this public extension so that it could be used by their property. Mr., I, I don't want to speak for Larry because it's his development, his money, but, but it seems to me that rather than fight us, the city might want to look at it as, how can we collaboratively look at some of the things Larry's doing and, and have a conversation about whether or not this new sewer line or these public access easements can be used to provide a future benefit in a more efficient way, and, and, and provide housing to, to people in Bend that need it. So that's our rebuttal. We're not asking the record to be real, open. We've given you our best. And if the city requests it and you grant it, we'll, we'll respond, but we're not going to ask for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Larry, did you have some additional comments that you wish to make?
That darn Chris Kobach, he takes all my material. Good job, Chris. So the one thing that I was going to go say that gives me concern, because I, I love the idea of the removal of the property line. I'm just highly suspicious that that opens Pandora's box for whether it's the public out there to come in and say that's a modification of that application, and so that previous application you decided, and this one is now open for disputes on that. Because basically, you've taken where you've had a 19-unit approval, and another 19, and you've removed that, and now it's a 38, and somebody's going to say, wait a minute, they didn't adhere to this larger thing. So if, in the event we can go write something in the decision that basically clarifies that, that, that shuts that door, and I'm not sure how we would do that, that's why we're pushing for this other option, is because we think it's, as Chris laid out, just the same as if it was in a PUD under a, a private road or a regular right-of-way, it's no difference. And second of all, it's probably the cleanest for everybody involved. And in addition, what Chris had, um, had mentioned is, it's not to and through. Well, of course, it's to and through. I can take that all the way up to Pedigree and put a, a manhole in Pedigree out there, and then whoever wants to grab it going north and south has a much more economical opportunity, whether it's going over to Woodhaven or going north or south on Pedigree. So, um, you know, I, I, I don't quite understand how the removal of that property line would work. If the city can help clarify, or you could, that that's not going to open up Pandora's box, and we're not going to get the public or the city to create a problem for both of these approvals because of that, then I am totally open for that. Although, I honestly think the public sewer through there is better for the community, just as Chris had mentioned, than a private sewer that now still has no sewer available that's economical on Pedigree in either direction. So that's all my comments.
Thank you, Larry. Tim, did you have any other closing comments on behalf of the applicant?
Well, thanks for thinking of me, yes. We did look at the to and through option here. We have run the profiles out to Pedigree Road. And unfortunately, that section of Pedigree faces the same challenge from any direction. When I run completely to and through to Pedigree Road from Daly Estates, I only have about two feet of cover, which is less than the minimum by a foot. Again, I, I suppose we could, we could find some ways around that if the city wanted it to and through. Any service further west would, would have to take up the pressure option, because Pedigree Road is, is higher than everything to the west of it, on Woodhaven, Juniper Haven, Pine Haven. All the lots over on that, that side, that side of Pedigree. But again, as the discussion is gone, I don't think there's anything prohibiting the gravity service to Daly Estates to serve the 19 units that are proposed. Excepting for the to and through, not, not meeting, not being able to be extended gravity all the way. And that's about all I have about that.
Okay, thank you. Well, if there's any other testimony or rebuttal, now's the time. All right, hearing none. I think that we should take up the, the question of leaving the written record open. Personally, as the hearings officer, I do want to hear the city's position on, on some of the legalities of removing the property line and the prior decision that was made on, on the other 19-lot development, and as it relates to this one. And it also sounds to me that the city would like an opportunity to more thoroughly analyze the materials that came in last night from the applicant. So I'm going to propose that we do the typical 777, and that would be a seven-day period of time from today for new evidence and argument to be submitted. And then the seven-day period following that would be rebuttal to the new evidence. So, you know, anything new you want for seven days. Then from that, it's rebuttal, evidence to the new evidence, and argument, of course. And then the last seven days would be for the applicant to submit final written argument, closing argument, if you will. And of course, the applicant always has the right to waive that time period. So I'm, I'm going to take a look at my phone here to look at what these dates would pencil out to be. So a week from today would be Tuesday, September 29. And I'm going to ask Karen to comment on the actual time deadline. I don't, I can't recall if it's 4 o'clock, 4:00 PM or 5:00 PM. So I'm going to ask Karen here in just a moment. But the first, the first seven-day period would close on September 29, 2020. The rebuttal period would close on October 6, 2020. And then the final written argument would be due October 13, 2020. Again, with the opportunity for the applicant to decide that they wished to waive that time period. So Karen, could you please comment on how people are to submit open record materials? These, they can be addressed to me, but they will be uploaded to ePlans, and Karen will usually notify me, or she does notify me when something comes in. So you won't be actually transmitting them to me, you're transmitting them to the city, to my attention. So Karen, please explain a little bit more, please.
Yes, typically, we do the 4:00 PM deadline, because that's when the permit center was typically open. But being that we're all virtual now, that's kind of a arbitrary time. So we will accept those comments or rebuttals until 5:00 PM on those dates that you mentioned.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any questions about the continued open record timeframe that I just outlined by anybody?
Yeah, this is Larry Kine, I had one.
Yes.
In the event that we don't provide any new material during the first seven weeks, then there would be no rebuttal. Would we have the opportunity to waive both that rebuttal period and the final argument period to expedite this? You're, you're muted, Stephanie.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, if there's, if there's nothing that's come in that, that you wished, well, okay, sorry, let me back up here. So the city, it sounds like, will be submitting something during, at the end of the, you know, between now and seven days from now. And then if, if the applicant, I mean, just to make things clear, if the applicant says, you know, we don't have anything to respond to here, so we're not going to be submitting anything, then that lets me know that I have everything before me, and let's just, you know, continue on with the decision. And of course, it always does help me and the city to say, you know, if, if you did submit something in rebuttal to what the city submits, you know, this is it, nothing else is coming in, we're not going to submit final written argument. And I also just kind of wanted to state generally, you know, I mean, these, these, these decisions are, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts. I usually like to start on writing a decision on, you know, on the items that don't appear to be particularly contentious, and then I put bullet points in. So I am working pretty much from, from the, the time that the public hearing closes until everything, until I'm assured that everything is in, and then, you know, kind of, kind of complete that whole process. But that's a long answer to a short question, which is, if you don't have anything to submit in rebuttal to what the city submits by next Tuesday, just let Karen know, and, and that, that will be, you know, I will be alerted that way.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we will go ahead and, and close the public meeting, and the record will be left open as per my description here. And again, as I just stated, if, if any portion of that open record period, you know, if, if any party wishes to say, you know, we're done, that's all you're going to get from us, then please let us know. And that will help me in getting a decision out as quickly as possible. So thanks, everybody, for attending today, and I'm glad that the smoke is gone, and stay healthy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.